Okay, I'll call the meeting to order. I'd like to ask Mount Morris Supervisor David Talbot, but please do we get some more questions?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I'll go one out of order and like to ask you to please call the roll. Sorry, we're not good at that. Yeah, I'm glad I was saying.
I'll do my best. Avon.
Here.
There we go, that's a good start. Caldonia.
Here.
Canisius.
Here.
Geneseo.
Here.
Groveland.
Here.
Lester.
Lima.
Here.
Livonia.
Mount Morris.
Yeah.
North Dansville.
Nunde.
Here.
Ashen.
Here.
Portage.
Sparta.
Springwater.
Here.
West Sparta.
Here.
York.
Yeah. We have some meeting minutes for your consideration, the fifteenth of November, our last regular meeting. Does anyone here have any changes they'd like to bring forward at this time? Here is none, I look for a motion in a second, please.
Question.
Walker.
Thank you, we have a motion in a second, all over the favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Eric Carey, we do have a public hearing this afternoon. Heather, are you going for an introduction to the hearing? Then we'll open it up.
Thank you Chairman. As you may be aware, effective September seventeenth, two thousand and four, the New York State Ag and Markets Law was amended with section three oh three B, which allows for parcels to be added to ag districts on an annual basis. The Livingston County Board of Supervisors designated the month of September as the thirty day annual period for submission of petitions by landowners to join an existing agricultural district. Three petitions for inclusion of predominantly viable agricultural land within a certified ag district were filed with the County Board of Supervisors this year. Pursuant to Ag and Markets Law, the county's Ag and Farmland Protection Board conducted its review of the petitions on October ninth, twenty twenty-three, determined that the three parcels proposed for inclusion in that ag district consist predominantly of viable agricultural land. The inclusion of such land would serve the public interest by assisting in maintaining a viable ag industry within the agricultural districts. These parcels comprise approximately fourteen point three four acres and are located in the towns of Lima and Sparta. Today's public hearing is to allow public comment on the consideration of these petitions, to modify Livingston County Agricultural Districts number two and number three, and to comment on the recommendations of the Ag and Farmland Protection Board.
Thank you Heather. Declare this hearing open at this time. I'll ask if there's any member of the public wishing to comment. If so, please come forward, sign in, applaud. I'll ask if there's any supervisor wishing to comment at this time. With that, the hearing will remain open to near the close of the meeting, and I'll ask those same questions again. We do have an abstract of claims for your consideration this afternoon.
Mr. Chairman, I move this abstract of claims and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Nap. Is there any questions or discussion on any of the items in the claims against the county at this time? Here is none, I will move to the end. Avon.
Aye.
Caldonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dansville.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Sparta.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes thirty-six twenty, absent, fourteen thirty-four, adopted. We do have the question for privileges of the floor. Chairman, I request privileges of the floor for Maureen Wheeler, campaign chair of the United Way County Workgroup Campaign. Thank you, Mr. Nap.
Thank you Chairman, for the opportunity to address the board today. I am proud, and I hope that you all are too, to work for such a generous, community-minded county that supports residents in so many ways, including running an annual United Way campaign. The United Way of Greater Rochester and the Finger Lakes is working three hundred and sixty-five days a year to build stronger, healthier communities in this region. To tell you a little bit more about what they're working on, I would like to introduce President and CEO Jamie Saunders.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for making time on your very busy schedule. My job is really simple, which is to express deep gratitude to each and every one of you. We are proud partners with Livingston County for a very long time, and we are grateful for your leadership, for your participation, and more importantly, your belief in what can be. This is like coming home for me. I have deep family roots in LivCo. My family actually was part of the eighteen-twelve general store, and we have Hemlock and Livingston. Really, this Livonia is our home, so this just feels wonderful to be among all of you. You are volunteering to lead in your communities, and we are deeply committed at United Way to ensure everyone has the opportunity to thrive, and we are deeply committed to Livingston County. You get things done. So the fact that for six years, I believe, Maureen has been running this campaign, we appreciate your leadership, that all of you as the Board of Supervisors, that you continue to lean in and to support the great work. If you noted, yesterday was the National Day of Giving, and that is a shot in the arm, a boost for organizations, twenty-four hours of giving, and collectively, it's a great signal of when people dig deep to contribute and to make a difference. Giving feels and is personal, and it is meaningful, and your contributions and your continued support and partnership with United Way makes a meaningful difference for our neighbors. In Livingston County, it is one in five of our neighbors are accessing supports from our human service network. There are needs out there. There are also wonderful opportunities and strength in our residents right here in Livingston. We have a network of nineteen organizations that you support via United Way, but in addition to that, we continue to inspire the collective giving, like yesterday, like with our workplace partners such as you. We are continuing to connect volunteers at scale to make a difference. They roll up their sleeves and they contribute to support our not-for-profit organizations, and we continue in partnership with you to tackle the most complex challenges. You know, as our government partners, it's usually not one thing, it's many things that have to come together to actually excel and move forward, and we are such a proud partner with you, and we are so grateful. We talk a lot about numbers, we file a lot of data, I love data, but when we talk about big numbers, we are also talking about individual families and households that are accessing food, such as at the Dansville Food Pantry, the Geneseo-Groveland Food Pantry, or the support at Geneseo Parish Outreach Center and more. It is individuals who are turning to our network, and we are there because you are there for us. So again, thank you so much for participating. I want to actually introduce my coworker, my colleague from United Way, who has been boots on the ground, Mark Anthony Boochi, to share a few more remarks, but again, thank you so very much for standing with United Way.
How's everybody doing today? Hanging in there? All right, I see we got some snow coming. It feels like it was just yesterday, we were here eight months ago. Eight months ago to kick off the campaign and say, hey, we're going to be helping our neighbors. And about a year ago is when I started this position. And when I started this position, I had the opportunity to meet Maureen Wheeler. And so Maureen was a team of, a strong team of one, who was pulling together over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars over the last five years that was reinvested into Livingston County to ensure that the neighbors, each of our neighbors that live in each of your towns, have the supports and services that they need to be successful. And so I come to you today to say that Livingston County is truly what we want to create around our six-county footprint. Under Maureen's tutelage, she has created an entire committee, putting on events quarterly, which is embedded, community giving, to each and every person that works here. So they know that they are giving back every day when they come to work, and that's because thanks to this committee and also thanks to Maureen Wheeler. And so while this may be her last year as the employee campaign champion for Livingston County, we want to say thank you. There will always be a spot for you on our team, you always have a spot for us, and thank you for teaching me how to do my job. So Maureen, thank you so much. and on behalf of our CEO and President and our Board of Directors, this is a small thing of gratitude to say thank you for your many years of hard work. Thank you, Maureen. And so at this moment, I would like to call up those committee members who are here. If you don't mind coming up quickly, listen, I know you're going to try to hide, I remember you. Don't, don't try to hide back there, because you are a huge part of what made this year successful. And coming out of the pandemic, a lot of things have changed. A lot of people have different opportunities and different ways that they can give, and so we have the check right over here, if you guys want to grab that, because thanks to all of your hard work, we were able to raise here too. And so this is truly, thank you to all of you, thank you to this leadership for embedding community service to each and every one of you of what you do. Dr. Coyle, thank you very much. And so as we move forward, we are fortunate for the foundation that has been built, and the success that is had by this committee that you just saw up here will be because of Maureen and the foundation that she set as we move forward. So thank you all for your time, and thank you for having the floor for us today. Hope to see you soon.
We do have a second privilege of the floor in a second. Mr. Chairman, I would request privilege of the floor for Kelly Gray, training and professional development coordinator. Thank you, Mr. Nap.
Thank you for allowing me privilege of the floor today. Since the Training and Professional Development Coordinator position is new to the county, I thought it would be important to share with you what I've been doing since I started in July, and also show you how this role is supporting employees. So what do I do during the day? So I thought this visual was a really great representation. My head is in a million different places during the day. I'm constantly looking for new learning opportunities for staff and trying to coordinate them and schedule them, and I gather all of these opportunity ideas from conversations, emails, surveys, and then what I do is I have this giant whiteboard in my office, I take all these ideas and I list them there, and that's kind of what my guide is each day when I come in to determine what I'm going to focus on. I've learned a lot of different things about the county since beginning here, and one thing that was really obvious is that employees are wanting to learn and grow in their profession, which for somebody in my position, I couldn't ask for anything more. So when these, I should also add in here that when I have these opportunities that are coordinated, I share a bi-weekly newsletter, so I spam people's emails with my newsletter every two weeks, sharing these opportunities so people can sign up and choose what they would like to learn more about. So it was evident from a survey that I sent out in the beginning when I first started that I needed to start with training, county-specific training. So those are doing trainings with the processes and procedures that happen every day here, and it really worked out well, because it wasn't just a good training for somebody like me who is new and learning these processes and procedures, but they also turned out to be great refresher courses for people that have been here for a long time. And I also want to say that you'll see on the next slide here that staff participation has actually been pretty high, and these specific trainings that I'm showing for the county are ones that are mainly for supervisors and department leaders, so my, numbers might look a little bit lower to you, but I was really happy with the participation so far. With contracts, purchasing, we have tomorrow actually, and there's almost fifty employees coming, so that's really great. So beyond county-specific training, there's also been a lot of interest in other areas like leadership, time management, customer service, conflict resolution, de-escalation, and being able to offer these types of opportunities allows us to focus on our employees as a whole and not just on their specific job duties, and this really shows our commitment and dedication to our staff, and in turn, it will help with retention, because they will not only, they won't just feel value in their profession, but they'll feel valued as people, and I think that will keep people working here in the county. I actually saw a statistic in an article that I was reading the other day, and it said ninety-four percent of employees say that they would stick with an organization longer if it invested in their training, and Livingston County is making that investment, so kudos to you for making that happen. So as you can see, these are the different offerings to all staff, and there's been a lot of high participation rate in these as well. So future training, so besides what I've offered, what else am I working on? One of those opportunities or things that were suggested to me was creating a mentor program for department heads. Like I mentioned before, there are a lot of processes and procedures that occur in the county that are not specific to, you know, the niche of every department, and so it's really important to help people feel supported in what they're doing and kind of have somebody to bounce ideas off of. I've been lucky to be in the administration suite where there are other department leaders, and so I've been able to do that very easily, which is not the case for everybody else. So that's something that I'm working on right now. You'll also see up here that the GCC Community Courses, I'm working on a partnership right now with GCC, they already offer these community courses, but they're going to offer them at a lower rate for Livingston County employees. So for an employee who wants to continue their education or maybe grow in their profession, this will be a great opportunity for them. I'm also involved in other projects and professional development of my own. NeoGov is a new program that we're going to be implementing very soon here with HR. It's also a learning management system, and it will essentially make onboarding and hiring completely paperless, and on top of that, will allow supervisors and employees to keep track of their professional development through technology. So we won't have to keep track of it on paper anymore, so that'll be really great once it comes, once it gets implemented. We're also working on updating the Intranet, so the intra-county website, so to speak. That's been a long time coming, we've been working on it for a while now, and we're right at the point where we can actually start creating and diving into it, so that's really great. Some of the professional development that I've had an opportunity to be a part of is the NACO High Performance Leadership Academy. I just finished that in November, it was a really great experience. I'm also participating in Equity Clinic through the University of Virginia and Leadership Livingston, so I'm very grateful for those opportunities. So I want to close by saying that I'm really proud to be a part of this endeavor, and as the county and its employees continue to grow, so do the opportunities for training and professional development. Not only are we helping the day-to-day jobs become more efficient, we're also showing our employees that we're invested in them and their professional growth. If you have any questions or suggestions for me, I'd be happy to hear them. Yeah.
How's the feedback been from the employees that have taken part, participating in these programs?
Great question. So after every training, I send out a survey to kind of get feedback to what was, went well, what would you like to see in the future, and the feedback's been really good. I've also had people reaching out requesting different trainings as well, so, and thankfully, I can tell that my newsletter gets read because I have scan codes on there as well too, so people are scanning it, and so I can tell how many people are viewing it, so that's helpful. Yeah.
I'm going to read your newsletter, but I have to.
Thank you, I'm actually going to add all of you to my
No.
Thank you, I've actually added all of you to my newsletter that's coming out on Friday, so you can see what it looks like.
Thanks, Tom.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we have a resolution on the preferred agenda.
Yes, preferred agenda resolution, just one, declaring surplus property, Center for Nursing and Rehabilitation in the Highway Department.
Is there any discussion in this resolution? Here is none, I look for a motion in a second. Please watch for it. Second. All over the paper. Opposed? Carey, are you in? Avon.
Aye.
Caldonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dansville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
And York. Eyes thirty-six twenty, absent, fourteen thirty-four, adopted. Next, we have a few resolutions that are going to be set for the county.
Mr. Nap, amending the two thousand twenty-three Livingston County budget for the Center for Nursing and Rehabilitation and Workforce Development.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent. Thank you, Mr. Nap. Are there any discussion and questions in this resolution? Here is none, I will move to the end. Avon.
Aye.
Caldonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dansville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Springwater. Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York. Eyes thirty-six twenty, absent, fourteen thirty-four, adopted. Authorizing the allocation of American Rescue Plan Funds, Livingston County Highway Department, Fuel Island, Replacement Project, Engineering.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Nap. Are there any concerns on this resolution? Here is none, I will move to the end. Avon.
Aye.
Caldonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dansville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Springwater. Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York. Eyes thirty-six twenty, absent, fourteen thirty-four, adopted. Let's see, establishing the ARPA, which is American Rescue Plan Act, project account for the Highway Department.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Nap. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Here is none, I will move to the end. Avon.
Aye.
Caldonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dansville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Springwater. Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York. Eyes thirty-six twenty, absent, fourteen thirty-four, adopted. Amending portion of Resolution Number Two Thousand Twenty-two dash two oh two, ARPA Funds, Information and Technology Services.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Nap. Are there any questions on this resolution? Here is none, I will move to the end. Avon.
Aye.
Caldonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dansville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Springwater.
Aye. West Sparta.
Aye.
York. Eyes thirty-six twenty, absent, fourteen thirty-four, adopted. Appointing Deputy Planning Director for the Livingston County Planning Department, Megan Crowe.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Nap. Are there any questions or concerns on this appointment? Here is none, I will move to the end. Avon.
Aye.
Caldonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dansville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Springwater. Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York. Eyes thirty-six twenty, absent, fourteen thirty-four, adopted. Congratulations, Megan. Yep. Chair, do you want to address the board or other department heads, workers? Stay up. Excuse me.
Thank you all, I'm excited to be up here and accept the appointment, I appreciate the support professionally and personally. I have about thirty minutes of prepared slides, if that's okay. No, I'm just joking with you. I appreciate the support and the opportunity, and will continue to work hard for the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Grandville?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to move the order of the agenda today. I'd like to take Resolutions nine, ten, and eleven and move them after Resolution fifteen, please.
Do we have a second? All over the favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Carey, so we ran through, you said fifteen?
After, after fifteen, I do believe.
Yeah, so you want to move away from twelve, then?
Right. Move to twelve.
Okay. Authorizing the Chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contract for the Livingston County Department of Health, Sunshine Speech Therapy, P L L C.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Nap. Are there any questions or concerns on this? Here is none, I will move to the end. Avon.
Aye.
Caldonia.
Aye.[1618.13]
Authorizing the Chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contract for the Livingston County Department of Health, Sunshine Speech Therapy P L L C.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Are there any questions or concerns on this matter?
Evan, Caldonia, Canisius, Geneseo, Groblin, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Dansville, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, West Sparta, York. Eyes thirty-six twenty, absent fourteen thirty-four, adopted. Authorizing the Chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contract for the Livingston County Records Management Department, Access Systems, Inc.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Are there any concerns or questions to discuss?
Evan, Caldonia, Canisius, Geneseo, Groblin, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Dansville, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, West Sparta, York. Eyes thirty-six twenty, absent fourteen thirty-four, adopted.
We do still have the public hearing open. I'll ask at this time if there's any member of the public wishing to attend. Ask if there's any supervisor wishing to attend. At this time, I'll close the public hearing. We do have two resolutions.
Yeah, so these would be affiliated with the Public Services Committee, so I would say Mr. Deming adopting seeker negative declaration for three oh three B additions to existing agricultural districts.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Deming. Are there any questions or concerns on this resolution?
Evan, Caldonia, Canisius, Geneseo, Groblin, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Dansville, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, West Sparta, York. Eyes thirty-six twenty, absent fourteen thirty-four, adopted. And approving three oh three B additions to existing agricultural districts.
Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent. Thank you, Mr. Deming. Are there any questions or concerns on this resolution?
Evan, Caldonia, Canisius, Geneseo, Groblin, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Dansville, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, West Sparta, York. Eyes thirty-six twenty, absent fourteen thirty-four, adopted.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing employment history of a particular person. I would ask you in this day and the board of supervisors to stay.
Do we have a second?
In a second.
We do have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Polls? Scary.
Okay, so, uh, we had amended the agenda slightly on the ordering, so now we're back to number nine, which is, uh, Mr. Knapp, adopting benefits for Livingston County employees.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Do you want me to go back into my little session?
Yeah, that was made, then I did read the report. Yep. No problem. Um, so, adopting benefits for Livingston County employees not covered by collective bargaining agreement for the year twenty twenty-four.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Napp. Are there any questions or concerns on this resolution?
Eva?
Aye.
Caldo?
Aye.
Canisius?
Aye.
Geneseo?
Aye.
Groblin?
Aye.
Lester? Lima?
Aye.
Livonia? Mount Morris?
Aye.
North Ansville? Nunde?
Aye.
Ashen?
Aye.
Portage? Sparta? Springwater?
Aye.
West Sparta?
Aye.
York. Eyes thirty-six twenty absent fourteen thirty-four adopted. Adopting the two thousand twenty-four miscellaneous pay rates.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Napp. Are there any questions or concerns on these miscellaneous pay rates? There are none, we will proceed to the next.
Eva? Caldo?
Aye.
Canisius?
Aye.
Geneseo?
Aye.
Groblin?
Aye.
Lester? Lima?
Aye.
Livonia? Mount Morris?
Aye.
North Ansville? Nunde?
Aye.
Ashen?
Aye.
Portage? Sparta? Springwater?
Aye.
West Sparta?
Aye.
York. Eyes thirty-six twenty absent fourteen thirty-four adopted. And adopting salaries for the employees of the county of Livingston for the year twenty twenty-four, and establishing certain compensation and benefits for other employees.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Napp. Any questions or comments I wish to make? There are none, we will proceed to the next.
Eva?
Aye.
Caldo?
Aye.
Canisius?
Aye.
Geneseo?
Aye.
Groblin?
Aye.
Lester? Lima?
Aye.
Livonia? Mount Morris?
Aye.
North Ansville? Nunde?
Aye.
Ashen?
Aye.
Portage? Sparta? Springwater?
Aye.
West Sparta?
Aye.
York. Eyes thirty-six twenty absent fourteen thirty-four adopted.
Did you have another appointment to the Livingston Youth Board?
Yeah, there was an appointment made to the Livingston County Youth Board. Robert Holt, sheriff's designee, term is at the pleasure.
Thank you. Do you have any updates for the board at this time?
Just, uh, one update relative to the board's strategic plan, so we do have that in motion and set and scheduled. Michelle, uh, I guess now me and Lindsay do have the... Okay, good, David's got it, I should say. Uh, sign up sheet, so please let us know about that. We have sent a note to departments as well for their items for, you know, inclusion and potential consideration. And, uh, again, hopefully we have as many board members as we can have there, and, um, look forward to, you know, a good, a good strategic planning session.
Any other supervisors have any other business for this afternoon?
Move to a chairman from Gracio.
Do we have a motion in a second, first term? All vote in favor?
Aye.
Polls?